This is our school committee meeting of November 29th, 2018. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded, so please silence your devices. And this morning, we are in the senior center and having a morning meeting, so welcome. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Our students are in finals right now, so they will not be here to give a report. So we will move on to our consent agenda, the approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, November 8th, 2018, as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mably, seconded by Ms. Picard. Mr. Treese?
Aye. I'm going to abstain.
Oh, that's right, Mr. McDevitt was not here. Ms. Picard?
Aye.
An aye. Four zero one. Superintendent's report.
As many know, may know, that the football team will be playing in the Super Bowl Friday night at 7:30 at Gillette. You can find information about tickets online at northamericanschools.com. And they had a wonderful captain's breakfast down at Gillette the other day with the captains and the drum majors, the captains and the cheerleaders, and the captains of the football team. So it was really nice to have all of them be honored, not just football, but our other performers as well. And, you know, we wish them the best of luck, they're going against King Philip. And it should be exciting, so really, that's the update.
I would just comment, King Philip also has a fantastic marching band, so everybody who goes, please stay for the halftime show.
Thank you. For the chair's report, I wanted to report on the Live Your Learning Education Foundation Dinner that was held on the 17th. We raised about $7,000, and that will go to help students go on field trips who cannot afford to raise the funds themselves, among other things. Would like to let everybody know we are having one meeting next month in December. It will be December 20th, 7 o'clock start time back at central office. And I'd also like to congratulate 6th grader Luna Prochazkova, who qualified for the Nationals and cross-country by finishing 29th out of 141 students at the regionals that were held in Nashville a couple of weeks ago. I think it was Nashville, anyway. Those, the finals are in Nevada next weekend, not this weekend, but the following weekend, so congratulations to Luna. Old business, second reading of the overnight trip.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Model UN overnight trip, as presented in the packet.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. Mably, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion? Mr. Treese?
Aye.
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 And aye. Next item is the budget directives for fiscal year '20.
So after the last meeting, I had a chance to, we had a chance to meet Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Mably, and Ms. Viskey Lynch, and we did some slight adjustments.
Although, the original, what we were looking at was last year's, so these are addenda or changes to that.
So those updates are unread, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. One is, these are just clarification questions. One is, the second bullet says, maintain class sizes to meet our guidelines. Where do we find those guidelines? I mean, I'm not disagreeing with anything here, I just was wondering where one finds those guidelines.
Those have always been our guidelines, I think they might, they might actually be in the policy handbook.
Okay, I, I looked around a little bit, I couldn't find it. Same thing with the guidelines for, for field trip ratios. So it's just, it's helpful to me when we refer to something if we know where, where it comes from. Not making any suggestions about changing guidelines whatsoever. And then the second to last bullet point, it says, continue to provide our faculty with up-to-date instructional materials. What does that mean at this point? Do we have things that we're purchasing or that we're adding on to what we've already purchased? Or is it the yearly updates, the consumables? What do we mean by that bullet point?
Ma'am, I can certainly speak to that. When we talk about continue to provide up-to-date materials, we're talking about parts of the strategic plan where we're maybe implementing curriculum like Lucy Hawkins or Eureka. It could be smaller things as well, along the way, so.
Okay, so there's not any, anything specific that we mean that we're looking to add at this point?
We're looking to stick with the strategic plan.
Right.
In the rollouts of the various components.
Okay.
So I actually have a question, and I apologize because I was not here last meeting, but class sizes to meet programming needs at the secondary level, the second bullet. I'd really like us to take a look at the high school level, where we are with some of our math and sciences. I know that, for example, some of the classes, there's only one offering, and there's more students who are interested in taking the class, and so they basically get moved in, moved out, and don't have an opportunity to do that. And I think that that is something that we need to look at. What, I don't know if guidance has, for example, waitlist reports or, you know, request needs, and then we can evaluate that if we need to hire additional science teachers, for example. Because I think we've done a lot of work in the past at the elementary and the middle school level to increase the curriculum. And I think we're seeing the results of that at the high school level, where I know that the need is greater than the offerings that are there.
Well, I'm excited that this is one of the directives, the secondary level piece.
All right, so I would definitely like an update on that before we go into budget season.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have one more question. In the last bullet point, it says, services and parent slash learning community engagement, and I'm wondering what that means.
Well, these are, these are certainly tied to the strategic plan, but these were your, the school committee's budget directives last year. And in keeping with them, in the spirit of the strategic plan, you know, it's how do we, how do we engage, you know, parents? How do we do outreach with our folks in Title I and such? The only thing I would mention is the 7.5 is pretty aggressive. And if you look at the class, percentage of class, classes over in the next...
I don't think we have that.
No, we don't.
Sorry.
Oh, you don't have that?
No.
Okay, so it's pretty aggressive, and I don't think it's a bad aspirational goal, but I think when we talk about actual, you know, what are our needs in terms of decreasing class size and looking at, you know, budget season, I ran a couple scenarios of adding two elementary. You know, class size continues to be one of the pieces we wanted to close out. If the elementary has hit really zero within two budget cycles. You know, if we added two, we'd be down to 12.4 from the 16. If we added four elementary, it would be at 10.1, and if we added six, it would be 7.9. So I think that the 7.5 on here is aggressive, because when we talk about funding level services and then the money that's left over, I think we're going to have to really closing the gap for elementary within a two-year period, rather than just doing it this year. And I think that's been the plan all along, because we'll have to assess need, you know, if, like Mr. McDevitt said, at the secondary level possibly, it might need a teacher. And we have to look at need at elementary. We may want to add four teachers, but we may want to add three classroom teachers and then a reading teacher, depending on what the need is. So that's what we're trying to assess during budget season, but I wanted you guys to have this. I'm sorry it's not in your packets, it must have been a late addition.
Could you just reiterate that the blue dot means theoretically, how many teachers, six, you said? To get to seven, or to...
Blue is over, over the goal.
Oh, right, okay.
Blue's over the goal. The red is percentage of classes with scenario one, the orange is, so red's two teachers, orange is four teachers, and green is six teachers.
So right now, it's 16.8% of our classes are above the goals.
Yes.
Is that what you're meaning?
Yes.
And you think it's more likely that it's going to be 10% next year?
I think it's more likely to try to close this gap to, in a two-year period, this year and next, at elementary.
So would it make sense just to change this 7.5 to 10%? That's what I was thinking.
That's what I was trying to get at also, because if you're saying 7.5, that equals six teachers, which we're just saying we don't know that we can do all at the elementary level this year.
I would disagree with that. I mean, I think our goal is to reduce class sizes, and if we're not hitting it this year, then that remains constant, right?
Right.
And our, if we're not in 20, 2020, sorry, it sounded funny, then, you know, our 21 goal needs to be that we're hitting it. But I don't think, you know, like, let's set a goal just because we know we're going to make.
Right, right.
Let's set a goal that we actually want to do, that is right for the kids and right for the community, and I think that that's 7.5%. And if we can drop that to 10, then we made a 6% change in what that is, and that's fantastic progress. But otherwise, I mean, let's just set our goal at 16.5, and let's pat ourselves on the back and we're done. I mean, let's set it to 7.5.
Well, the reason I put 7.5 in there is I want to show you the different scenarios. I do think, you know, at one point, we wanted to close the gap in one budget cycle. But I think my predecessor was really clear last year, it may take two.
Right.
You know, and as people may not know, because some folks probably, no, they don't, not everyone follows us on TV or makes a lot of the meetings, but we've already backfilled about, we initially wanted 10. We've already backfilled five, so we're in the process. But, you know, during the budget, as a team, we're going to have to look at what the need is, rather than just say, you know, if we were going to add six teachers, that may take up the entire
Right.
budget available after level services.
I guess my point, sorry. It's like weird.
7.5 is, is below even what we'd get with six teachers at 7.9. So we're, we're setting a goal that we can't possibly reach, so could we at least change that to 7.9? If that's our aspirational goal.
Not that I think the number is, I mean, at the end of the day, it's about hiring teachers. This is just, you know, conversation, if you ask me. We've had these numbers in place, these, these class size goals for a long time, and we made incredible progress from this chart. I just think, you know, it's been unrealistic for so long, let's have a realistic, realistic goal. But at the end of the day, I don't think it matters as long as we're hiring teachers.
Right, and these percentages, you know, they could change depending on.
Sure.
Depending on enrollment.
Brand new apartment's going in across the street from me, so.
Yep.
It's only 109.
Not right across.
Pretty close.
Okay. So I'll make sure Bev sends this to you folks as well.
That'd be helpful.
So this is our second look at this, do we vote on this now? I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll move that we approve this, but my question is, what's, what's our goal? 7.9%? Is it, are we 10, are we taking the easy way? What are we doing?
I don't think it's a matter of an easy way, I mean, we're going to hire as many teachers as we can. I just don't think we're, we're going to hit 7.5, so why, why put it there? But again, to me, it's just, again, it's, it's conversation, it's not, it's just about hiring teachers to me.
Well, I think that's the, the goal to look at, what can we do to get it down to that level? And if we come back and Dr. Gilligan says, look, if, if we can do this, and it means we've got to hire six teachers, can't find the money, and we hire three, and we get to 10, then that's what we get.
And we've made significant progress, we just haven't achieved.
Right. Not every goal is achievable in a year.
I would just say, when I, when I met with Amy and Holly, the discussion we had was, you know, it really, we're heading in with these directives to really look at what our needs are and what the survey data's saying from my entry and those findings. But more importantly, like, this is ultimately where we want to get. You know, if we could get to below 5%, that's almost an effect of zero, you know. But that's why we put in the 7.5.
I just feel like this is, this is the document, we're telling the administration, meet these goals for FY '20, and FY '20 alone. And if we're setting them, not saying setting them to fail, but they, he's being very honest that it's very unlikely we're going to meet this, so.
You know, one of the things in our shared goals and our goals that was approved and reviewed maybe for five meetings or four meetings, it was decreasing class size, you know, so.
Which we've done each year.
So I look at a directive as more in the spirit of, personally.
I'm comfortable with leaving it as 7.5 for the same reasons. Mr. McDevitt? We may not get there, but we need to do everything we can to try to get there.
Well, one small argument, then why isn't it just zero? Isn't our goal really zero? Because I do agree that we shouldn't put a goal that just so that we can say, hooray, we did it, because that's kind of pointless, but then why isn't it zero?
And the...
Or are we comfortable, and maybe we're saying that, maybe we are comfortable with, and then my daughter was in this case last year, two classes of 28, they did fine. Of course, we don't want to do fine, but if there are a couple cases where maybe people are one, two people over, are we okay with that, and so?
I don't, I don't want to get into semantics, but, but this is a budget directive. This is telling the administration, this is what we want to happen. It's not a goal, it's not, you know, a wishlist. This is saying, this is what we want the administration to do in the budget this year. And if he's telling us, and I think we all know it's unrealistic, then why are we directing him to do it? Aspirational or not, it's, it's not what this document, in my opinion, what it, what it should be. Just hire as many teachers as you can, Mr. Superintendent.
I mean, certainly, we've said, I think, this is, this is only a one-year, you know.
Right.
Directive, and certainly, I don't have, I can't pull them up right now, but certainly, I don't think we've met the goals on the directives before necessarily, so.
But it's what we're, what we're pushing the schools and the budget to do, and that's where I look at it.
Well, and another way you can look at it maybe is, we're pushing you, so you're putting together a budget that maybe is a little, and I'm not saying this is what you're going to do, but more than that you're suggesting hit between, and it then gives you support to go to the town for more than you're being directed to, because we're directing you in another direction, so. Does that even make sense to you, what I'm saying? It lets you put together the budget you need to put together.
I mean, realistically, you know, adding six to bring it down, we're still in the process of evaluating what rooms are available.
Sure.
You know, we're approving an amount.
Yeah.
But we have to look at need.
Right.
There might be, you know, a bubble here or a bubble there.
Right.
And that, you know, we'll make those decisions in the spring. This is just about appropriating the teachers. But I, I don't think it's likely that we're going to necessarily just add six classroom teachers, because that would eat away.
Sure.
Just about all of the...
Well, because there are other needs in the district for teachers as well.
So what do we want to do here?
So the motion, and I think the motion is that we've got this at 7.5%.
Do you guys, I mean, you could also think about our goal's to reduce the percentage of catified classes that exceeds these class size guidelines in FY '20. If you're looking just for, you know, to decrease or reduce.
I guess maybe I'm misinterpreting what this, this document is. I thought this document's to direct you to form a budget meeting the, this criteria.
Yes.
That's what I thought this was, and if we know you're not doing, going to be able to do that, and you're telling us that, I mean, so you come to us in January with a budget that doesn't meet this goal, what do we do? We say, no, make it more, we're going to go to town, we need to ask for more money for that?
We could.
Of course we could, I'm not prepared to do that, and that's why I'm saying we should make it 10%.
Well, let's say 50%, and then we're all set.
Well, I mean, I think realistically, he thinks we can get, we can get to 10%. So, again, I mean...
But if we could get lower, wouldn't we want to try to get lower? I wouldn't want to put 10% and then stop at 10%, even if we could go lower.
We could always go lower, we can go out, we can go ask for, you know, a $3 million increase at town meeting. We could go, we could go down to 15, you know, which would be awesome. But, I mean, 15 kids per class, not 50%. Again, I think this document is not an aspirational document, it's not a goal-driven document. It is telling the administration what we want to see in the budget this year. And if, if we want that, then he's going to come to us with a budget that is significantly, probably, I'm guessing, significantly more than the town manager is going to give him for an increase. So I'm just putting that scenario in front of you.
I would, I would agree with you, David, and especially where we've brought up the last two school committee meetings, looking again at the high school, at some of the things that are going on, whether it's world language or math and science. If we're pushing for six elementary teachers, then, and that directive is very clear versus any directive whatsoever about looking at the other levels, that's going to put the budget process in a bind, where it's fighting against itself. So I think I would be in favor as well of, of going with the 10%.
I just look back, I mean, I've been here a while, and, you know, we've always had these goals of having them, you know, class size, you know, being between 18 and 22, 23 and 25. And we were able to say, whatever it was, three years ago, with Mr. Mailer and Dr. Price was here, you know, we've never met this, what are we going to do? And she was able to say, look, the school committee is continuously pushing us to hit these goals and to hit these targets. And we now have the Ambrad Street Early Childhood Center, which has made dramatic changes in what those numbers are. So I think if we just put a goal in there because it's safe, then that's great. That's just not the goal. And if Dr. Price had it and said, look, we're going to add in some additional classes at the secondary level to meet those programming needs that the students have, and as a result, you know, we're only dropping elementary to 12%. I think that's a consideration that we need to look at. But I think our goal is to, to have him be creative with what he's doing based upon the needs that we have and the classroom sizes that are available to us.
I would just add that I meet with Andrew Mailer weekly for three hours. We work very collaboratively together. And, you know, certainly, the needs of children in schools could be endless. It's our job with these directives to figure out, prioritize, what do we need? How do we continue to keep the momentum going forward to meet the goals that we set this year that are in line with the strategic plan, so.
My last point, I say, if I directed the administration to give me a budget that met goals, I would expect to have a budget that, that met the goal, met, met the directives. And if that meant having a higher number than the town manager was going to give us, then that's what I would expect. I don't expect the administration to do that. I expect him to work with the town manager, like we've done for the last seven years, eight years, whatever it's been, to come up with a consensus budget that is fair to, to the schools and to the entire town. And I'm afraid if we're directing him to give us a budget that is going to try to meet this directive, it's going to be more money than the town manager is going to, you know, allot us this year. That's my last point on.
I would just say, I mean, we've always done the fiscally responsible piece with this, and recognize that, you know, whatever our increase is, whether it's three and a half or four and a quarter, whatever it is that's there, that's what it is. And as a result, we've had high class sizes, we've made some great steps with that. But, you know, let's talk about, you know, let's have those hard conversations. I hate to say it, but we go through budget season, and we literally are like, any comment from the community? Nope, no comment, any comment from us? Nope, everything looks great. Let's have some hard conversations about it. So if, if that's our goal and that's a directive, then what would it take? Is it an extra million dollars? I don't know. Is it a half a million? I don't know. But let's look at it, and then if we need to peel back some layers to figure out how to fit into something, I think those are the hard conversations that the communities ask us to do.
What do we say to Madam Chair with the motion and all that stuff right now?
Well, somebody can make a motion with the 7.5%, if it doesn't pass, then we can make a new motion with a new number.
So I'll move to approve as presented in the packet, the school committee fiscal year 2020 budget directives.
Any second.
As they're presented in the packet, like you're saying?
Yep.
On, on the screen, right.
That's on, yeah.
I really feel like I need, I mean, I know it sounds like splitting hairs, but 7.5 is not what we're looking at on those charts. 7.9 is what we're looking for on those charts. If we change that number to 7.9, I can second the motion.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
I'm sorry, could you...
Take that as a what?
Friendly amendment.
I know what you said, I know what you said.
The 7.9 is the...
You want, you want to move it to 7.9%?
At least the 7.9. 7.5 is not in the ballpark, and we're not talking about that.
And I'm not part of the voting, but I just do want to say that, you know, 7.9 would be adding six elementary teachers, you know, and it may be more realistic of adding three or four in this cycle.
Right, but 7.5 would be adding seven elementary teachers, and we're not talking about that.
Okay. Just for a point of clarity.
All right, so if I understand this, we have a motion by Mr. McDevitt for 7.9%, seconded by Ms. Picard.
No, by you. Oh, it was Ms. Picard, great, okay.
She can't second a motion.
That's right, yeah.
Can I get Robert's voters on you right now and like try to further amend this right now?
I guess.
We can just do a straight vote, I don't want to do that, but I wouldn't belabor the point.
All right, any other, any further discussion?
I just have one other comment, sorry.
That's okay.
We've talked a lot about secondary, but never, and Holly and I talked about this a little bit with Greg, we don't call that out anywhere. Is it understood to everyone that bullet point number one is across the district?
Yes.
Making sure.
Mr. Treese?
Uh, no.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion carries, four to one. All right, new business.
All right, we're thrilled to have the folks from Understanding Our Differences here today, Heidi Waters and Maureen Ryan, they are tremendous at organizing and running the program. They have some activities for us, but they also have a short video. Do you guys want to start with the video, or, okay?
Do you want to sit back so they can use the mics? Yep, they can sit at the end there. So they can see the screen.
Yeah, when I pull up, that way the camera could see you.
Everyone is different. It's really no big thing. It's the differences between us that make life interesting. Those little quirks that make us work are heaven's sakes. So give a little thanks that we're all different.
Welcome, Heidi, Maureen.
Great, thank you so much for having us. I'm Maureen Ryan from Understanding Our Differences, and I'm with Heidi Waters. I don't know what the best way is for us to speak, but we're with the Understanding Our Differences program. Many thanks to VisLynch for making that video for NAIPAC a couple of years ago. It was done at the autism program at the Franklin School. And you can see how engaged the children are in the program when you look at that video. Understanding Our Differences is a program, this is our fourth year. It's a program to educate children on six different disabilities. We go to all five elementary schools for every child in grade three through five participates. Each child participates in two programs, two for the third grade, two for the fourth grade, and two for the fifth grade. The programs are chronic medical conditions, asthma and allergy for the third grade, and also deafness and hard of hearing for the third, physical and intellectual disabilities for the fourth, and autism and learning disabilities for the fifth grade. And so we do a total of, between Heidi and I, we do a total of thirty programs over the year. So it's, we're in the schools a lot. It takes about two hours to run the program, and we rely heavily on parent volunteers. Heidi, maybe I'll, can I, can I hold this for Heidi? Toss it to her?
It's taped on the bottom, though.
Okay, I'll hold it here. Maybe leave it in.
It's like you know me. So, do you want to talk about the history of it first, and then go from there, or we can do this?
Well, I was just going to say, the program began in Newton about thirty years ago. It's been running ever since, and we have, we started it four years ago here as a pilot, two programs. Started the second year with thirty, and we've been running, this is our fourth year with the thirty programs. We work collaboratively with the school system and NAIPAC to get this up and going.
So, four years ago when we started it, it was kind of to see how it worked out in our town. And we only did the fifth graders at Franklin. That was the pilot year. And it was such a huge success, and to this day, we've had no one give any negative feedback. It's always been positive, both the parents and the children, as well as the volunteers. So, this year being our fourth year, and it's kind of bittersweet because that video we showed is my son's fifth grade, and he's in it, and he's in eighth grade now, almost in high school. And he still remembers it, you know, from almost four years ago. And they don't forget what they learn, and there has been, you know, an effect, positive effect with these programs. Kids are always engaged, you know, maybe when they're watching the video, they might start to get a little fidgety, but for the most part, I mean, activities are totally hands-on. You saw the autism activities, one is, for just examples of what we do for activities, to learn about being, having autism and being non-verbal. We do a puzzle together, and they each have some puzzle pieces, but they can't talk about who's next. They can't use any words. So they just kind of figure out whose puzzle piece comes next, and they communicate through different ways other than speaking. So that's an example of the autism activity. We have about two to three activities for each program. It starts off, so the program starts off with a video of what we're teaching, and then they break into groups and the activities happen, and that's for about a half an hour, forty-five minutes. And then a speaker comes, and that's kind of almost the favorite part for most kids and volunteers. And we try to get a speaker from the high school. And often, the kids will say, "Oh, my gosh, that's my friend from cheerleading," you know, my, one of the assistant coaches, or, "I saw him play football last weekend, and he was in my newspaper." So they have, you know, some kids come in with the physical disabilities. Some of them are more obvious than others, so they know ahead of time, oh, he's here because of this. And others may have dyslexia, and they're not going to know necessarily that the wrestling coach at the high school has dyslexia. So it's really neat to show them that, you know, number one, these disabilities don't go away. And number two, you can still do whatever you want to do with these disabilities. And it's just been so effective that way. It's been really great, yeah.
So we work also closely with the high school to get speakers to come in for the kids. So most of our speakers this year, we've gotten even more speakers from the high school, they're high school students. The kids love them being in, and so it's been a nice partnership. So we're working not only with young students, we're working with high school students, we're working with parents from the community. We would love to have seniors here from the senior center.
Yeah, they just need a query form.
It's like a full circle kind of thing. I mean, we'd just love having all of the different ages working together, doing this. And it's been very well received in the community. Our biggest need generally is volunteers. The parent volunteers are so necessary.
It can be grandparents, it can be neighbors, you know.
It can be.
Whoever's interested and, you know, enjoys spending time with kids, that's kind of a requirement.
Right.
And having a query form. You need to have the query check, yeah, which you can just go to central office for, or any of the schools.
Right, right.
We were just talking on the way here about how these high school students that come to the programs, they get just as much out of it as the elementary school kids, you know, and it teaches them to speak in front of others. And just the connection that they have with the kids is nothing like, you know, we have with them.
Yeah.
They react great to us, but there's just something special about, you know, teenagers and younger children and having that connection. They're never hesitant to ask them questions, and the high schoolers are never hesitant to answer them, which is really great.
Someone who's attended a couple of these, the most remarkable piece is you can have, fill the auditorium or the gym at Franklin, for example, the cafeteria at Franklin, I should say. Engagement. It's quiet. I mean, it's never quiet when you put all those kids in one room because the level of engagement is just amazing. They're hanging on every word.
It's true.
They truly are. Well, so I've been a volunteer with the program, and I'm tremendously impressed with it. But I also have the experience now of having two kids in college. And in those larger settings, they're really interacting with so many people from, you know, with different experiences and different disabilities. My son happens to be at Rochester Institute of Technology. They have a tremendous program for students on the autism spectrum. But they also house the National Technical Institute for the Deaf. So he didn't have this particular, you know, exposure at North Andover Public Schools. But I just see how important it is, and as you say, the fourth grader, who's now an eighth grader, or fifth grader, who's now an eighth grader, remembers it. Having that specific information about interacting with people who have differences in their, what, neuro profiles or however we want to say it, I just think it's really a valuable thing, and I hope that North Andover can continue to do this. I know it's a struggle to get volunteers, and, you know, if there's anything we can do to help with that, if you have ideas.
We appreciate that.
We're so grateful to so many of you too that have come out. We're grateful to the central office. At the table, so many of you have been helped us out in so many ways, and it just, it's been fantastic. The support we received from the community, from the school department, I mean, we're more than grateful to that support.
And that's what's so great about it, like you said, is that, you know, the kids at Franklin, and it's, you know, versus kids at Kittredge. So, you know, autism is, kids with autism are in one specific school in town. So the kids in the other four schools, they may never have met someone with autism before. So, you know, the kids in that school, you know, "Oh, there, you know, that's my friend so-and-so." And, you know, and the other kids come in and aren't too sure how to interact with this child. And this shows them ahead of time, before they all go into the middle school together, that, you know, this is clearly what's going on here, you know, like, he's not ignoring you. This is what's going on. And it helps them be more comfortable approaching kids who aren't necessarily approaching them. And it's been really, like we said, it's been really effective.
It's been great.
Come to middle school.
Another thing that I noticed from volunteering in some of the videos is it not only helps the students who are learning how to approach students with other abilities, but it's also the siblings of the kids who have other abilities. It's a huge opportunity for them to get support of how do you work with me and my brother? And there are a couple of videos in particular, I think it's intellectual disabilities in particular, where they show the siblings together, and then how all my friends are so, talk to my sister all the time now, now that they understand. So that's a whole other group of our students who this is serving.
Yes, it is, and so many siblings have come forward during the presentations and kind of identified and felt more comfortable in that setting. It's been great.
So it's excellent. Thank you guys for steering the ship.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, and for volunteering so many. It's been wonderful.
I want to thank you both for stepping up and taking on this role. For the first year, we have a stipend position to do this, to oversee it, because it is a ton of work. And getting the volunteers is, as you said, the hardest part. But I have never met a volunteer who, at the end of it, said, "Oh, I didn't like that. I'll never do that again." So they all come back, and then we just keep recruiting more, but thank you so much for doing all that.
And one other volunteer plug, it doesn't require in-depth knowledge of.
Requires no knowledge.
That's right.
You get a script.
But I think people, we've talked about, people have been intimidated to volunteer, that they maybe don't understand enough about what they're teaching, and it's not like that at all. You run activities, and it's fantastic. It's a lot of fun.
You can learn it in five minutes before it starts.
That's right, and there are training modules and all kinds of stuff, so it's a lot of fun.
When we say stipend, it's a very small amount. It's probably more symbolic, but we did have an open and competitive process where we posted this. Very transparent, and I will say that I think a lot of people knew what was involved because there was only two applicants.
You know, I don't know. It's across the country, actually.
They've educated over a hundred thousand children with this program over the last thirty years, but I don't.
Statewide organization.
Yes, out of Newton. Like, I originally went down to Newton to get trained to do it and met with them.
Yeah, Maureen's been in this since day one.
And Heidi was there for the first one, yeah.
Yeah, but she's, don't let her fool you. She's the pro at this. I'm still learning. But, yeah, it's, like she said, it's based out of Newton. There's a Twitter, there, on Twitter, it's Understanding Our Differences. I can't remember how they make it smaller, but if you search Understanding Our Differences, you'll find it. And that's not us, that's national. If you go on Facebook, it's Understanding Our Differences of North Andover is who we are. And there's also an Understanding Our Differences, that's also the national. So you could reach us that way and find out information about us and find the signup sheets and all that stuff.
There you go.
So that's the national one.
That's the national one.
It was the national.
And then if you add of North Andover, that will give you our page that we just created this year.
I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments. I think the program is amazing. I remember when it started, and I think I've told you this, I remember being at a baseball field at Carl Thomas, and some of the kids from Franklin were there, and they were talking about this program that they had had. And the other kids were like, "We didn't get that. How come we didn't get that?" You know, like, "When's our turn?" And I remember kind of people saying like, "Well, it's only at Franklin this year." Like, "Well, next year, like, it will probably be at your school," and they were like, "Well, that's not fair." So I think it's amazing that we cover all of our elementary schools. And I think now, I mean, I think my middle son has had the benefit of going through it at least probably fourth grade, fourth and fifth grade. I think he might have missed the cutoff for the third grade. But it's interesting how I see him react and respond to some situations at the middle school compared to my older son and understanding where different students are. And so I think that that's been really positive, and I just wanted to make sure that I shared that. But the other thing that I think is really amazing, and you guys highlighted this, but it's really different when you talk to kids and you're an adult. And they get it, but it's not anybody I know, and, okay, yeah, maybe you're that kid's father or mother or whatever. But I saw some pictures online of some of the students who were speaking, and, I mean, they're kids that I know, of course. You know, most people in town know, and they recognize, and these kids all know them. They know, some of them, they know their stories, some of them, they wouldn't know that. But that's so impactful, because, like you said, I mean, they understand, it is my friend's sibling. It is, you know, a cousin of somebody, and then they can relate it back just so much more at a personal level. So I don't know if there's a way to, for some of these, to really make sure we have those students as well as parents in. But that, I think, just really, from my perspective and kind of hearing from some other people, I think that piece is just so powerful. And so I just, again, I just want to thank you. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Next up is our presentation on social emotional learning.
And do you want to plug in? Or do you want to use? Distance is hard.
Distance, thank you. I appreciate that.
This is Nikki Murphy. She is our Director of Social Emotional Learning. And we asked her here today to really give you an update of where we are with our programming. And, you know, as you know, we, the first year for Nikki, we planned on, you know, buttoning up tier three. Second, really getting tier two, when the counselors and them up to speed. And the ultimate goal is to really get the teachers all trained up with Nikki on tier one interventions, so. Thank you, Ms. Murphy, for coming.
Sure, and I just want to thank Maureen and Heidi too, because I have the pleasure of working with them. They kind of fall under the SEL department in a way, so they're actually, we just invited them to come to the next BRC meeting to talk about their program a little bit more in the hope to kind of find some additional volunteers as well. Because obviously, Understanding Our Differences and RISE, when you talk about inclusion, you know, is all aligned. So they're doing great work, and thank you. We're excited to have them at BRC. Okay, so, thank God, there's a clock right there, because everyone knows I'm a talker, so I'm going to go quick, I promise. This I just put up here just because when we presented, I think Donna and I presented last, maybe April or May it was. In the spring. Just wanted to let you know that every slide after this is basically going to address where we're at and the, sort of what we've been able to accomplish on each of these action items since the spring. So you just have sort of your strategic plan in place. So we can go to the next slide. Do I have the thing, or does someone else have it? Okay, oh, that's kind of dark. So, just briefly, you know, when you're looking for sort of where to maximize outcomes, you want to look at school conditions, classroom conditions, you know, teachers, where we're going to invest sort of our energy and our resources. We had, when I came in in June of 2017, data that I reviewed, which was the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, Nurses' Visits for Anxiety, the number of kids in out-of-district placements, some discipline data, and then I came in and did, conducted an internal resources, needs and resource assessment in the summer of 2017, meeting with principals, with central office staff, with teaching staff, counselors, et cetera. I'm going through this because I just want you to know that what I found interesting is that the results and the needs that we found in all of this data that was existing and new on all three tiers was similar from school to school across the district. So the things that rose to the top in terms of our needs were professional development for all staff and administration, which is really kind of like a tier one-ish thing that we would do. None of the, all the schools felt like we didn't have enough or current culture-climate data. And they all felt that we need some SEL integration at the tier one level in terms of how would we work with teachers and their teacher practices and their instructional methods to integrate SEL into the classroom, so that all students had access to social emotional learning. And then consistency with an SEL curriculum, programs, policies, protocols. So Donna had done some work in the previous year before I came around some of this stuff and got the ball rolling and had done a bunch of stuff, and she had written it into the strategic plan that we needed to have really consistency across the district, because it looked different in every school, what was kind of going on. And then at the tier two level, all the principals and the staff said, we need, some of them have student assistance teams, which is sort of a tier two problem-solving team, but some schools didn't. And the ones that did felt like they needed some more support around best practices and improving those tier two teams. And then, of course, additional supports that we needed for tier two students. So, that was past the beginning, our partnership. So, that was past the beginning of our partnership with Transforming Education. So we looked at all past and current data, and we're incorporating that into the SEL action plan that's being developed. It was already developed in 2017, but again, we're incorporating this new data. We took, the surveys were administered from Transform Ed, we did a culture-climate survey for staff and students, and then we're measuring students, and just the students took this survey on the four SEL skills that we would like to teach students. We administered in the spring of 2018, we're gonna do it again this coming spring, and then again in 2020, the spring of 2020. Just so you know, obviously, the baseline data that we got in the spring of 2018 is sort of driving the action items that we're gonna develop that are school-specific, and some of the things that we're working on currently right now, that I just have met with all the principals, is we're gonna now be sharing all that data with staff, the school-specific data, they're all gonna have a chance to look at it, and then, within the course of each of those meetings at all of the schools, and the next though, happen in the next two months, we have the dates all set, we're gonna talk about what are the action items in each school that are gonna help us to implement what each school needs. So for example, if, you know, Franklin scored low on growth mindset as an SEL skill and also had some culture-climate issues, we're gonna pick one or two action items that this year we'll immediately start doing, which might be school-wide professional development, it might be me doing some small group coaching with SEL, how to integrate, you know, those skills within the classroom setting. Do you want to jump in any time? I know, I'm hard to, it's hard to get a word in edgewise with me, and I'm trying to speak fast so that I can not use up too much of your time. So around our SEL curriculum, which is another one of the action items that we're on, that's on the strategic plan, I just handed out, it's called like a RACE, Alignment of RACE and SEL Skills. So when you think about social emotional learning, RACE is really the school culture-climate initiative, if you will, that's been adopted, that has been integrated well into the community, into the schools, pre-K to 12, and I know a little bit more at the elementary, and then we're working on, I'm working with principals at the middle school and high school to kind of integrate it more at those levels, the secondary level. What I gave you is a handout that basically shows how, because we had to choose what four SEL skills do we want to teach, and we really wanted to make sure that those SEL skills directly align with RACE and the values that we're trying to teach to create a positive culture and climate. So if you look at that, the first page shows each of the acronym RACE and what that means, and this is directly from the SEL website and from, you know, the BRC and everything. You gotta look at those skill, those values and what, and how we define them, and then underneath you're gonna see what of the four SEL skills we're trying to teach that are aligned directly with the RACE acronym. On the back of that sheet is a definition of those four SEL skills. So it's growth mindset, self-management, self-efficacy, and, what's the last one that I always forget, social awareness, thank you. And so you can see how they're directly aligned, because if we're gonna try to create a positive culture and climate that's respectful, where kids are achieving, where it's inclusive, empathic, et cetera, what are the skills they need? And so there's a direct alignment there. Out of the budget requests, out of one of the strategic, part of the strategic plan was to make budget requests and programming requests, what do we need in the school to continue to meet or to expand meeting the needs of kids across the district in terms of their social-emotional needs? We came up with and have begun implementing this year, a Tier Three program at Thompson, and a Tier Two, what we call the Focus Program at NAMSS. So there, many of you know, there's a Tier Two program also called Focus at the high school. Then the one we've introduced at NAMSS is servicing 50 kids already. It has a community service project, it's counseling group, it has academics, and eventually we want to leap into that, the SEL curriculum that we're developing in small groups, so...
And just to add on to that for one second, so we all know Pete Concanon was the focus program up at the high school. So last year, in thinking about how we're going to create this, we, because he's retired, we brought him back as an advisory, because again, having a vertical alignment of all of these programs, whether it's the SEL program, it doesn't matter, is really key and necessary component, so we wanted Pete to be able to mentor and help out, do this creative, he's at the middle school, so as they transition to the high school, it's unlikely they're going to need the same types of support, so we want the language to be the same, the types of curriculum and the approaches, so it's been pretty beneficial. And just another reminder, when I first got here, you may recall that almost 50% of our out-of-district placements were due to social emotional learning issues, so really analyzing that and establishing the need for the additional programs and the need for vertical alignment in curriculum, we have been able to maintain students in district as well as bringing students back to be able to support them appropriately, which has helped fund these programs. So we're not interfering with the other goals of the school committee, which is to, you know, decrease the class size of students at the elementary. So just to let you know, we're already seeing, from the start of my first year here, we're seeing progress in those areas too.
And I think that another great point is that Tier Two Focus Program that we're developing at the middle school, the therapist that we hired for that program actually interned years ago under Pete Concanon in the Focus Program at the high school, so she had a very clear, you know, we had created the program model, et cetera, et cetera, but she had a very clear idea of how to implement that model, so that obviously helped us out a lot.
We kind of borrowed her from Rick Gorman.
We did, and he's okay with it. I did speak to him. So, back on to the ongoing vertical alignment. So just briefly, like Donna said, before I came, she was working already on, and had noticed, you know, we needed, we had these different Tier Three programs in place across the district, but there wasn't a lot of vertical alignment. And so a lot of the work that I've had to do as an SEL director, in addition to these two new programs, one Tier Two, one Tier Three, is continue to train on this sort of standardized model for, that's a best practice model for Tier Two programs and Tier Three programs, training all the staff, not just the program staff, there's a lot of training for everybody else. So what does that look like? You can imagine, it's, you know, it's tough to sort of juggle all of the different aspects, because you need to get all of the program staff understanding, here's the model, here's what we offer, here's who we service, here's the entrance and exit criteria, et cetera, here's how you collaborate with outpatient providers, here's how you collaborate with gen-ed staff, because those kids are included in the gen-ed setting, as well as, you know, spending time within the program. So, there's a lot of that training, and then the other training is PD for just all staff in the schools that have, that house these programs, so that they understand, well, what does it mean when a child comes into this program? How do they get into this program? What's my role as their teacher, et cetera? It's multifaceted.
Including the teaching assistants too, not just the teaching assistants that are in the programs, but across the board, because, you know, our role is always to include all students as much as possible, so when they're in there working with the kids, it's good for them to have an understanding of, you know, students' emotions, how they regulate their emotions, as well as some of the associated behaviors and how you manage them.
So, yeah, sure.
Would like noon attendants, because I know a lot of behaviors on playgrounds come-
We would like to include noon attendants when we can. Our initial conversation centered on, one, focusing on the vertical alignment of the programs from, you know, the very young students right up through the high school, the program staff, and really getting into those gen-ed classrooms, in particular where the students are being included in the TAs, so we'd like to do that.
It's funny that you ask, because the other day we just were talking about this, how we had used Pete Concanon in the past to do PD with the noon attendants, with the bus drivers, and we had this conversation just the other day at Leadership. Maureen's laughing, so, but that's somewhere to go. You gotta remember, Nikki's one person, but she is a dynamo, and, you know, when we said, oh, we're gonna focus on Tier Three one year, Tier Two, Tier One in three years, we've really plowed ahead without, you know, decreasing the quality of the work in the Tier Three and the Tier Two, but the ability to have the PD at all the schools, last year, this year, makes a big difference.
It does. And when you think about exactly what you both just spoke about, you really want to do professional development for everybody, from the people that are working in the lunchroom to the bus drivers, et cetera, because everybody has, obviously, as we know, an impact, negative or positive, on kids, and everybody needs to learn how to communicate with them effectively, how to identify a child who's starting to escalate, and what skills you would need to make sure they don't escalate further, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's endless.
And it varies for each student as well, so that's the other piece of it, it's really, so you have your global professional development, but then you need to individualize it for the specific students as well. That's important as well.
So this slide is about, one of the, again, on the strategic plan, was to develop a, an SEL action plan. So just to go through very briefly, we did develop the vision that prioritizes SEL, that's on the SEL website, we did obviously conduct, like I said, the Needs and Resource Assessment and partnered with Transform Ed to get additional current data, student and staff data. We are designing and implementing effective professional learning programs, that's obviously ongoing. We have adopted and are implementing evidence-based programs, all of that training is what we just spoke about, that is obviously ongoing and will be programs, really, my own personal experience is three to five years to get them really solid, and to a place where not only the staff in the program and the students understand the expectations and all of their needs are being met on their IEPs, et cetera, but that everybody else, from administration down to all the staff in the school, understand, again, who we're servicing, why they're in the program, what their role is in collaborating with the special ed teacher and the therapist in the program, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of just work around program development that we're continuing to do. What we now need to do moving forward, and this is really more Year Three and Four, and again, all this stuff really is ongoing, but is starting to integrate SEL at all three levels of school functioning. So in curriculum instruction, in school-wide practices, policies, protocols, family and community partnerships, and establishing processes to continuously improve SEL through inquiry and data collection. So just one point on that last part about, you know, inquiry and data collection. In my meetings with principals and the staff that are coming up over these next couple months to share this survey data with all of the staff and action plan, one of the things that all of the principals that I suggested we do, and they all have agreed and would love to do this, is to create, so normally you have a district-level SEL team, and then you create building-level implementation RACE/SEL teams. And those teams are the ones that are gonna look at the data as we continue to collect it, to help us with planning for what their specific school needs based on that data, to make those sort of in-course corrections, to say to me, Nikki, you know, you helped the ELA department with, you know, growth mindset and how to integrate those kind of practices in teaching, but now they need some help on that kind of stuff. So each school so far has said, have a building-level implementation RACE/SEL team, so that I think is important to note. And then the last slide is just briefly, I won't talk about all these because we could go into a lot of detail, but just some other exciting kind of news. We have a collaboration with the Excel Network, so that is made up of some districts across the state, we had to apply, we had to get chosen, North Andover got chosen, which was wonderful, and we not only get to collaborate with other districts, but there are leading sort of research groups, the Rennie Center, Transform Ed, that help to facilitate that, and in addition to that, it's also part of his Mass Superintendent's Association, School Committee Association, so we have like a really strong kind of network of people helping us. A similar partnership, if you go two bullets down, is the partnership we have now with the Mass School Mental Health Consortium, so that is, again, all SEL-related, all three tiers, helping us with action planning and that kind of stuff, and it's districts around, that's open to everybody, districts around the state, but we have districts as far as down near the Cape and, you know, Framingham to along the East Coast. It's so, even though it says mental health, it isn't just Tier Three, we're working on all three tiers. We have the Anti-Defamation League Program at NAMSS, shout out to BRC who really spearheaded this and kind of got this up and running, helped me a lot when I first came on with connecting with the ADL, and that program is just up and running in terms of all of the kids have been trained, the teachers have been trained, and I, so far, the feedback I'm getting from administration and staff has been really positive, and the kids seem to like it, so lots more, we could talk about that, but that's a new program. Expansion of partnerships with outpatient mental health agencies, so part of what I do when I came in was kind of assessment, how can we partner with outpatient clinics to bring free therapists into the school? Because if we don't have enough budget to continuously add more and more counselors, we do need more people in the building to help us provide therapy for kids, and so we're doing that. So now there's three agencies that have signed on with us, and we've got, I think, therapists in three or four schools right now, coming in to provide, again, it's free to us, they bill the insurance company. This year, right now, just working in this, like shout out to Laura Hardiman, Donna's administrative assistant, she's helping me with get, getting, all the counselors are now gonna be billing Medicaid for their sessions. So right now, it's just for students on IEPs, but eventually in July, when the law changes, we can bill all kids that have Medicaid that they see for sessions. And so for years, I guess, in the district, nurses have been billing, I think some other specialists maybe OTPT, but the counselors were not, so I just worked with all of my SEL department staff and with Laura Hardiman to do that, and that will bring money into the district, specifically into the school, the school benefits from that. And then just-
We've been doing a training for a number of people, because as Nikki said, with the law changing from July 1st, there's gonna be an increase in students that are not on IEPs, that we can now increase our returns on Medicaid, which is fabulous, so we've been pushing that out a lot.
So they don't have to be on IEPs?
As of July 1st.
That's a piece of change.
They have to get their signatures by January 1st, so that's a big push that we're doing.
Okay.
Yes, but they do, this is just for Medicaid students, it's not for kids on private insurance.
Sure.
And then the last thing, just again, kudos to Hillary, who continues to help me with all the information, I'm always inundating, to improve the SEL department website, and just, we're expanding that. So now you can see everything about the SEL skills that we're gonna integrate, you can see what that standalone lessons, what it looks like integrating into the core, et cetera, et cetera.
This is a good one for parents, too.
Yes.
I was at it, and it says, you know, what to do when? If your child's doing this at home, and it gives you some steps to take, so.
So just to speak to that, and I'll stop, I promise. The guidance staff at the elementary level that are working to create the elementary SEL curriculum, not only are they going to be starting to push in lessons with all kids around those four SEL skills in the second half of this year, but they will also be sending home to parents information about those skills and how parents can support the development of those skills at home.
Great. That's great.
How do the students get identified for the focus groups?
So, the focus groups, because they're Tier Two, right? So, at the middle school, they service some kids that are on IEPs, some kids on 504s, and then kids that are identified as at-risk but are not necessarily on either of those types of plans. They're identified predominantly through administration, through counseling staff, and sometimes teachers will make recommendations, saying this child is struggling. Using a tiered approach, they don't immediately say, all right, there is entrance and exit criteria, so they don't immediately jump into, let's put them directly into the Focus Program. But part of how they might be identified is when a teacher or somebody comes forward saying, I'm worried about this child's behaviors, you know, therapeutic stuff, maybe some academic stuff, we put them through the student assistance team process, the SAT team process, and that SAT team creates an intervention plan that might make a recommendation, saying I think this child needs to support a focus.
Another important area that we're looking at as well in supporting kids, particularly at the secondary level for the Focus Program, is, and we had this conversation when we were looking at the MCAS results, is in regards to absenteeism. So right around the middle school level, that's when students often will start becoming a little bit school phobic, because, you know, they're starting to become, you know, just socially sensitive about who they are. So we really look at that piece of it as trying to capture those kids early on before it gets to be that chronic problem, and pull them into that program and provide those sort of therapeutic supports, those groups, so that they gain an understanding that they're not the only ones that are feeling this way. So really trying to capture kids early and help them out before things get too difficult.
Other questions, or?
Quick question about the surveys that you said you administer in the spring. Is that to every student or to certain?
So, the culture-climate surveys are for staff and students. The students start at grade four, so it's four to 12. And then the SEL skills survey was just administered to students, and that, again, is grades four to 12. We don't yet have, there are other surveys, but the ones that we chose that we felt were the best for the district and to meet our needs, really are for grades four and up. It's tough to find surveys to administer on kids under that age, for obvious reasons, I mean, their self-awareness is low.
But those teachers, you do, the K to three teachers, you'd survey them somehow?
The pre-K to 12.
Pre-K, yes, thank you.
They all did the culture-climate.
I'll do it, good, okay.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
Do you have any questions in the audience?
Oh, yes.
May I just speak for just a minute, please?
Absolutely.
Sure.
I'm Dale Hallen from the North Andover Senior Center, I'm a rest series coordinator, and I'm here today, and I have four speakers to fill, and I want to speak to Mr. Gilligan first, and Mr. Gollum, if you cannot do it right, then just look back to me and just say, February 25th, always on a Monday, would you think it's, can I write your name down?
Let's put me in tentatively, absolutely.
Tentatively, okay.
I gotta check with Bev Zagari, the boss.
All right, okay, okay. Okay, all right, okay, okay. And we haven't seen research, so just to take an honest position.
Yes.
And the next one is Amy.
Yes.
Amy, we'd like to have you come back.
Yes.
And another lesson in English.
Really?
Yes, and, you know, every time I, like, I'm doing better with the words, like, I use, instead of but, I use however.
Really?
I did a presentation, but I used however.
Because I have another idea to pitch to you as well, which I can talk to you about you afterward, with these ladies.
Okay, now, we are-
Unless you really want English.
March 4th, 11th to the 18th, which one would you check?
Oh, mine.
Just grab one.
Let's say the 11th.
All right.
That's not vacation, okay, March 11th, okay.
Okay, and then David.
I was thinking September.
Yeah, well, oh, September.
I was, I just visited in September. I think Mr. McDevitt, or Ms. Picard, or Ms. Lynch.
There's some people that I'm not familiar with here, but I would be more than happy to, anyone that would-
Come down for an hour, have some coffee.
Now and then, on a Monday, 10 to 11:30, and it's a wonderful group of people.
Wonderful.
Yes.
It is, actually.
All right.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be happy to.
Who can I have? Who would check March 4th?
I'll take, I'll take March 4th.
Okay.
Andrew McDevitt.
You said 10 to 11:30?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and your position?
School committee.
Well, I thought that you were in over there.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, and I have one left, and Amy, I have you for the hour.
I'll do something.
Yeah.
I will do something in the spring, because I work with the library for the community reads, and it will be on race amity, and I think myself, and I can see if the head librarian would like to come with me, and we can talk about what all of that is.
Library once a year.
Okay.
Kathleen Keenan would be excellent with the reading.
Sure.
March 18th, for that.
You've got it, yeah.
Well, the St. Patrick's Day.
Lorene.
Lorene, L-O-R-E-N-E.
Marks.
M-A-R-X, yep.
X.
And I thank you very, very much, thank you. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
I'll just write that down.
Looking forward to seeing you.
Yeah, we're excited.
And we'll have different plans on the school, that's for-
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yes.
I just wanted to make one other comment, kind of ties in with all of the social, emotional learning that we've been talking about. Next Wednesday, December 5th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Stevens Estate, we have a speaker from Columbia Gas, who'll be here to talk to any community members about signs of trauma, and she will be repeating that conversation at the high school, again, Wednesday, December 5th, at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. And anyone in the community is invited. Thank you. Okay, next up is the first reading of a Hawaii Island science camp trip.
I had just one question, and that was, it talks about the fact that this is a course, and that tuition is involved, because it's for credit, et cetera, and then it also talks about all the other costs, the flight, the bus, the food, et cetera, but then it says at the bottom, estimated cost of the trip is $3,800 per student, which includes everything. I know everything means everything, but I want to make sure everything means tuition also. Not just the travel part.
Duly noted.
All the meals, everything there is included in the tuition.
Right. But I just want to make sure that tuition is as well, I know it's right above it.
Right.
So, I just, I know everything means everything, maybe everything means everything in that paragraph, I just want to be absolutely sure tuition is part of it. Because tuition goes to a different place than-
Mm-hmm.
We can check.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, and I know we've had this conversation a number of times before, I mean, this is a pretty expensive trip. For some, I think it's two and a half credits at the high school level. I mean, are we, what other programs have we explored other than Hawaii? I mean, we have probably one of the best science and oceanography centers in Woods Hole, which is, I don't know, probably two hours of a drive away, as opposed to, I think, a seven, eight-hour flight, and significant cost, which may accommodate more students, even from a financial perspective. So, I would just be curious what other alternatives are, but-
We could certainly have Mr. Jackson come in and/or come in with the teacher.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I would just say in response to that, Andrew, that that price of the trip is not tremendously different from the trip that they have taken to Yellowstone for the last couple of years.
Two tons.
And, you know, certainly, our students have access to a lot of things in this area that they could access without, without partnering with teachers from the high school, but a big trip like this, for a student to take that on independently, would be much more challenging, so that might be one of the reasons that they're looking at, and certainly volcanic activity in Yellowstone, volcanic activity in Hawaii are not readily available, you know, here in our area.
Let's hope it stays that way.
So that's, just some thoughts that I, that I have about that.
Bev and I can certainly bring the questions to the high school principal.
Anything else?
I'll hear first, please. Oh.
Sure.
Yes.
I did, too. I was just curious, I went for it, it was a little funny. So, flight is included in the $3,800?
We don't know.
That's the question.
That's the case.
Does all mean all?
It says everything.
Yeah, so it was funny, because it-
But just above it, it says, in addition, there will be the cost of the flight, plus a trip cancellation.
Right.
Stay tuned for the next meeting.
Yeah. We'll get the info.
Anything else on that? Any questions? All right. So the next item I put on the agenda, just to take a look at, we did a survey about four, not we, but the previous school committee. Yeah, Andrew.
Mr. McDevitt.
Did a survey about four or five years ago of the parents and community members on the school calendar. So, I thought it might be time to look at this again and see if we would like to put out another survey, particularly around maybe the early release Wednesdays, the vacations. I know the end of the school year is a different issue this year because of our beyond-the-classroom days, so that, we have a hard stop already. But I just wanted to see if this is something we think we should ask for people's input, and just kind of get the pulse of the community, or not.
So, I have a couple of thoughts. One, I'm not opposed to kind of re-surveying the community out there. I think that, you know, we did it, I think it was before, it might have been longer, in part, I think, because of some of the weather conditions that we had. There were also some issues with the school year going to June 30th or 29th, extremely late. We've made some changes with religious holidays. I'm not opposed to doing this, but we've also now implemented beyond-the-classroom, and so my only thought would be, would we get better responses that are more accurate based upon our current situation if we did it maybe in March? Or later in the school year? Because I think, I honestly think people in the community don't all realize what beyond-the-classroom means, and that, you know, I think it's three more snow days we can have, correct?
Yeah.
And then after that, like, we're not, you know, making updates, we're not adding them on. And, you know, one of the questions in here is very specific to school vacation for April and February. And so, you know, our ability to kind of keep those, I mean, there was a, you know, somewhat in-the-middle response of, you know, maybe we consolidate down to March or something like that, but I think people might respond differently, having seen and better understood the changes that we have there. So, I'm all in favor of doing it, I just think maybe doing it a little bit later might give us a better representation of the data.
I agree with that. I would say, I would say do it after the school year's completed, actually, maybe even next September, or even over the summer, so we can see while people respond to, you know, kids getting home in the middle of June.
Yeah.
I would just say Andrew's right. In one sense, it was interesting, because the debate became, does the majority rule, you know, particularly around eliminating religious holidays? And, you know, what would the, you know, the thing that I think we'd bring up is, what would the majority think, you know, those early releases are our lifeblood for PD? But what's interesting is, we went to the early releases, because parents didn't like the once-a-month half-day.
Right.
So. But you're exactly right, Andrew, it was the March and the February and the April would probably also have to be something that was done in conjunction, maybe with some other districts.
There's been talk of that.
Because we have MCAS in March, and that kind of stuff, so.
Interesting. The other thing that I would just say very quickly, to piggyback on to the early release days, is I think when we initially did them, they did not have the same frequency that they do now. So, I think now we try to do, if I can remember correctly, first and third of every month, and I feel like when we first did it, it might be the second and the fourth, and then the next month might be the first and the third. So I think there's a more frequent pattern that's there, and I think that's been easier for families to adjust to.
That's right.
So.
I'll be interested to see if the early release days particularly came up in the data from the entry survey that Dr. Gilligan did, and I know that's going to be presented in December, right?
I'm going to present just the findings in December.
Yeah.
And then I'll do a report for the community in the spring. But I can tell you, with over a thousand participants, that is not a, even in the top 10.
Okay, so it wasn't significant there. And then, also, we are going to do some sort of survey with beyond-the-classroom, we were going to do an assessment at the end of the year, so perhaps we can ask some questions included in that, rather than doing a completely separate survey?
That's a good point.
That's very good. So that's what I would encourage us to consider.
Okay.
Cool.
That works.
So we're not going to do a survey then?
We are going to do it, but not until the spring.
But we revisit these questions.
Or even the end of the school year.
Yes, that's why they're in there, just to see what we asked in the past. I don't think we need to repeat them. School building committee update, is there any?
Not really. The weather's been awful. The last two things have been the final paving and the canopy, and it seems like every Saturday, it's poured, it's been windy, except for last Saturday, which was over the vacation break, so they didn't work that weekend. So, the canopy is scheduled for this Saturday to be installed, but I think the weather is sketchy again, so wait and see. That's the best I got right now. It's just been awful, every Saturday, there's a rain.
I'd just say a quick update, I'm thankful to add the additional 22 parking spots, 10 on the left, 12 on the right. And also, as part of the Fields Project now, there's an additional 47 on top of the 22, and we'll give the rough code on those. But David's exactly right, right now, they spent a whole day raising up the sewers and things, so they could pave, you know, and if we don't get it paved, we may have to ask them to lower them, because in the last snowstorm, when we had the two-hour delay, Jamelia and I were up there pretty early in the morning, because we wanted to make sure, A, they knew where the additional parking was, and B, we had to put cones and barrels on the raised areas.
I don't think it even paved with the temperatures now, so I was just texting John Borgesi from DPW, and I didn't hear back from him yet, but it's just been brutal, brutal fall.
But I would compliment, the contractor with the town, the Donald Brothers, and they did an excellent job of not ripping up any of the manhole covers, different lines, et cetera, so.
And when are we expecting feedback from the state regarding NAMSS capital project?
MSBA, we still haven't heard.
Okay, so do we have a-
It chooses around this time. What kind of person?
I call them weekly.
Thank you. Thank you. Offer them chocolate.
Okay, seeing that there is no public comment, does anybody in the committee have anything they'd like to add, close with?
Nope. I would just like to say, you know, we have the Super Bowl on Friday night, the, I think there's three buses going down of fans, and obviously more students that are driving